Okay, good morning.
Morning.
Today is February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, it's nine o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Please rise from the plats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for coming and welcome. We'll move on to item three, citizens desiring to be heard. This morning we have two. We'll start with Mr. Edward O'Brien. Sir, you're welcome to take the podium over here.
Sure.
You've got three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Ed O'Brien, I'm a resident of Logan County. I live out on Pennsylvania, south of Highway thirty-three. And I'm gonna read what I want to leave with you. This is to the commissioners from me. This request is about saving lives. It's not about needing anything special other than trying to do that. On this past Friday, a woman was killed at the intersection of Pennsylvania and Highway thirty-three. Another woman was killed a quarter mile east of the intersection, less than two years ago. Two women were killed at Broadway and thirty-three about two years ago. Or that I guess they didn't see the stop sign and went up thirty-three and got hit. Pennsylvania is the primary feeder street west of Broadway into Logan County. From Edmund, Oklahoma City, a lot of people take that shortcut. The traffic on ten and on thirty-three has increased ten to twenty times over the past ten years that I've lived there. Speeding is the norm. I made this request about two years ago and was ignored and received no response. The county commissioner for the area told me that the county did not have the money to put in the signs requested. Which what I'm requesting is speed limit signs and two stop signs. They were designed to slow the speed of traffic on Penn. There are no speed limit or stop signs for five to six miles from the highway south to Seward. There's nothing, nothing. And a lot of it's blacktop. I understand when you're out in the country, you don't have speed limit signs on dirt roads. But that's a blacktop and the traffic has increased and this... I've had them go by me seventy, eighty miles an hour as I'm picking up my paper in the morning. It's absolutely ridiculous. I know that people could say, well, call the police. Well, they don't ever come out there for one. And it's gonna take more than a cop showing up once in a while to slow it down. Also, there's thirty mile per hour speed limit signs on White House Road. What I'm asking is from the highway, one mile south to White House Road, to put in, to get some signs in. And I propose that. But somehow, there's thirty mile per hour speed limit sign on White House Road going to the west and also on May Avenue. And I just don't understand why that blacktop gets special treatment when Pennsylvania, where all the traffic is and is coming through, gets nothing. Gentlemen, please do what is right to try to help save lives. Please consider this request to slow down the traffic feeding onto the highway. I'm gonna also approach the state about doing something to better mark and slow down that area right there. People just ignore passing zones, no passing. And that's how that one woman got killed, because they're coming up over a hill and she didn't have a chance. But, and this the other day, it was a truck driver, the lady was making a turn at Penn and truck driver didn't slow down and hit her and knocked her head on collision with another car and killed her. I don't know what the status of the man in the other car is. The flow of traffic again has increased and continues to, along with more speeding, because there's nothing to slow it down. As it is, it is not safe for the residents along there, including myself, and Harmony Church. Harmony Church's attendance has grown and I think they're planning to build a larger facility because of the number of people. There's developments going on, as you were talking about, to the south, to the southwest. There's a big development going on on White House Road. And the county, it looks like, is putting in a pretty nice blacktop road between May and Highway seventy-four to accommodate a developer. My specific request is for the county to place six thirty mile per hour speed limit signs, three on each side on Pennsylvania, between White House Road and State Highway thirty-three. Thirty mile per hour has been the standard which has been set. And to place two stop signs at the intersection of Penn and White House Road on the north and south of the intersection, stopping the north-south traffic flow. I just ask you all to please consider this. I'm not on some big agenda, but I sure would like to know what you decide, if someone would let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you.
All right, we have one other citizen that would like to be heard, Mr. Bill Williams. So we've also, we have, and you want to speak about the veranda plat that was going in? So if you have a choice, you can wait until we get through item four. Item five is that, and you can speak at the beginning of that. Or you can speak now, sir, whichever you'd like. Okay, so if you want to hang on for just a second, I'll put you on right before we start the consideration of the plat. How's that?
That's gonna work.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item four, consideration of possible action on minutes of February seventh, ninth, and eleventh.
Some blue.
We are catching up.
Oh, second to the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes and any further discussion. Here we go, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, you then. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item five. Have you signed this? Your commandment. Uh, consideration of possible action on final plat of verandas in the southwest quarter section, thirty-five, fifteen north, three west. That would be, you've got the plat.
Kelly and Waterloo.
Right. We've got an individual who'd like to speak on this first, so if you don't mind, Mr. Wilson?
Please.
Up and down, that gentleman that was just there, I can feel for what he owns or doesn't. But, you know, the sheriff, the sheriff, he can't, he can't control everything. These people drive skews and lanes like idiots. And they, you know, it'd be flooded down there at Waterloo and Kelly and everything. So how are they gonna get rid of the water? And there's a natural gas line, a transmission line that goes from Kelly down to a half-mile line and it veers off and goes under the railroad track. Okay, they cannot put houses sixty-five feet from that natural gas line. Okay, so, uh, which, I don't, I don't quite understand. They're gonna have to have a retention pond or something like that. And how are they gonna get rid, do you go to the water commission, National Resources on the water? Or how would you go about getting a hold of somebody and see if they have a plan to get rid of the water?
Well, so first of all, the gentleman is here that may know a little bit about that.
So, so I don't know if you've seen the plat, Mr. Williams? So there's detention ponds. This has been done by Grubbs Engineering, so this will be paved, curb and gutter, all directing the water to the detention ponds.
I know, but if it goes to the east, that's just a big hole out there.
I don't know if he's, I mean, we had it all engineered, I don't know if it's putting a structure under Kelly to take it down. But the way the roads, we're spending the money to put gutters in instead of just a concrete road like some of the other communities along the way.
Right.
So.
I understand, but the detention ponds are gonna have to go, go to the east and it's...
If you want to look at that, it'll show you the...
Can you show me on here?
Yeah, the ones that are unplanted areas, right here, unplanted.
Unplanted will be detention ponds. This, this, I know, this is Waterloo here, this is, this is traffic. Thank you.
If you got a retention detention pond, you know, what part of the water? Is it gonna drain underneath Waterloo, down to the south?
He's gonna, he's gonna drain underneath Waterloo, down to the south, I understand. Okay, so the ponds will hold all the runoff water. Instead of just putting a concrete road, that's why we're gonna pave it together.
Right.
We're trying to direct it to the ponds and percolate in. And then whatever's left over, we're gonna dam.
I think the concern would be is if we're directing water back to the west underneath Kelly, we've got, we've got plenty of water going that way already. And, I mean, that little housing addition that sits right there on, what is that? Something Hills or, I don't remember the name of it, so.
Yeah.
They've, they've got on Simpson or Simmons side of the road.
Meadowlands, Meadowlands, that's where they've got...
There's quite a flood problem back there. And the housing addition that was built across the street to the north finally ended up putting a pipe, a drainage pipe, a detention pond, a drainage pipe underneath the road. There's Simmons going back into that other housing addition to where the water drains out.
Oak Tree Estates, it's all, all in there. And right there at, just north of Waterloo and Kelly, every time it rains, it just floods. There's a tin horn there, but it's not enough to carry it. And, and you know, you've got people that hit that thing is wide open.
Right.
They don't have any sense, but, but I'm just wondering, how are they gonna get rid of the water? Because they have to...
One of the things that I might recommend, and I'm willing to do whatever the two of you decide is best to resolve in your mind, you know, which way the water's going and that sort of stuff. Maybe you and Mr. Williams could have a meeting and we could come back and reexamine the plat after you guys work out to his satisfaction which way the water's going, that kind of stuff. I mean, he does have quite a bit of land in our part of South County and there's a legitimate concern of flooding of the land. And I, I understand what you just said about, you know, it's been through DEQ, but DEQ doesn't do runoff. They're more into, you know, other, other things.
No, I understand that.
Right, so I, I don't know, what do you think, Brian?
I mean, we're, you know, we're just looking at the plat and actually we're not looking at the drainage.
Right.
Is this something that the...
Water Resource Board?
Yeah. Steve and the Flood Zone or Flood Plane Board might look at?
Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes, I can, I'll look at it with them too.
Okay.
Is any of this in the Flood Zone, I guess is what I'm asking?
No, we're built, the lots that are joining is probably...
That's the, that's the only thing I can enforce, you know, or have anything to do with, if it's in the flood.
Right, I guess that was my question, is this in the flood plains?
Well, if you talk to the gas company, the gas company is not gonna go for that, I'm gonna tell you that right now. Because they're, they are very particular, that's a transmission line and...
It's the same transmission line that, on Simmons and Kelly? The other subdivision that we have down across the street? The gas line cuts right through that to Highland Meadows? Right. So if you, I don't know if you've been down there, it's the same sixty-five foot of the gas transmission line?
The one you're talking about, they come across me, right there on Kelly. And they come across me and I give them the easement, because it was just a straight shot. And it was just like where that bar is. But that's where one of the problems is, where the water sits all the time. And Marvin, I'll verify there, Simmons and Kelly, he's put up the guardrails and everything else. And those people hit that water and they just go airborne.
Right.
And so that, I don't, you know, you might, you might get a hold of the gas company and see if, but...
Really, I think it's in between the builder and the gas company, not the county and the gas company.
Oh, I, I agree. However, my, my only concern is we've got a citizen that's concerned about what's going in next door to him. And I would just like to get his concerns resolved with, you know, sit down with the builder and, or the engineer or whoever.
We've hired, I mean, we've spent the money on an engineer, so it's been professionally designed by a civil engineer to take into account all the water. I don't know what meeting Mr. Williams is gonna be able to... I mean, I can set up a meeting when we start, if he can meet out there, you can come too, and you can meet the engineer on site.
Well, I mean, I kind of, in the same boat as what Monty just said, it's not really a county issue other than one of our county residents that's concerned with what the water's going.
If we want to put a motion that within, within thirty days of us starting to move the dirt, that we'll have an engineer meet Mr. Williams on site to explain the drainage or however you guys want us to do it.
Well, it's, it's gonna involve more, more than me. It's, it's probably gonna involve the county too, because some of that is gonna be running off on the Waterloo. Some of your drains, and it floods like crazy right there at Waterloo, across from Oak Tree. And, and it comes off of Kelly, you've got some of it's gonna be going off of Kelly. I don't know if the county, Marvin probably know the answer to this, if the county has any say-so about the way the water flows off of the addition or...
Just downhill, normally.
So, I mean, are, are, do you think they're redirecting the water here?
Yeah, because the part that we're, the gas line and where it's...
The gas line right there.
Okay, this is all, this is like on a hill right here, this part right here. And it's all gonna wind up right down in here. At one of the retention ponds. And this is the low spot right in here. So all the water is gonna be like this, and it'll...
Didn't you say you were gonna plumb this retention pond and be able to flow?
Yeah, the engineer, I'm not sure if he's gonna use the road or if he's gonna put a structure across it, but yeah, we're doing something.
All that will go into Waterloo Road south or PSL?
So this, so this is about, this section here is probably ten to fifteen foot higher than this section. So there's already a ton of water here, so it's going that way and it's all going that way right now.
So you're gonna have to...
You have, your pond's right here, right?
I'm on the south side, north side.
Well, by the church, by the church, there's a pond right here.
Monty, I think, I think we could all agree that once, once you develop a piece of land and put streets in it, curb and gutter, it's gonna collect a lot of water, it's gotta go somewhere. And, and I mean, we've seen that before in other areas. But, I mean, I think there's a, I think there's a legitimate concern on where the water's going. However, I'm not sure that we want to take up a whole bunch more of our commissioner meeting time, you know, trying to make you feel better about what's going on. I don't feel good about approving the plat right now until, until you feel better about which way the water's going, I guess.
No, I haven't, I haven't talked to any of the people. And I wish they would've come to me before and said, hey, you know, we're getting ready, this is what we're getting ready to do and stuff like that. And it would've solved a lot of, you know, you, I heard hearsay, this is gonna do this and all of that. And then here, all of a sudden, they're gonna do that. They never did contact, you know, I would wish they would've done that, maybe we could've worked something else.
Right, so is, I mean, is there something that we can work together between...
Yeah, I mean, I have to set up, I mean, so from a developer's standpoint, we pay professional engineers to draft it with the water capacity. But from a personal note, if Mr. Williams wants to meet with engineer, there's already stakes out there. So if you want, if you want me to set up a meeting, you can meet with Grubbs Engineering out there and he can explain his design to you.
I think that's a good first step, a solution. I mean, you know, as long as Mr. Williams is satisfied that not all the water's gonna flow into his driveway, right? I think that's kind of where we're at right now. We, we know the water's gonna go the way water's gonna go. There's, and from Waterloo Road down to Kelly, down, that's all downhill. So water's gonna go down Waterloo Road into those ditches there as well when it rains, if it rains a lot, there's a lot of water that's gonna go out through there. The challenge we have right now though is that first mile off Waterloo Road on Kelly doesn't have a lot of ditches, doesn't have a really good ditch line on your side of the road. On the east side, on the east side of Kelly, there's not a real good ditch line through there.
Yeah, so our, so the other community was across the street, Highland Trails.
Right.
So that was the other community. So this is a, almost a minority of Highland Trails, is what this is.
And Highland Trails has flood problems today in the back there.
But we, we didn't, we didn't design that.
I get it, I get it, I'm just saying...
Right, so if the board wants to step in on private matters, you know, between citizens and developers, that's fine. You guys just read the motion of what you want, done.
Well, now, on the Highland Trails, I know something about that. They, they didn't do what they should've done. It flooded over there in Shannon Lake and everything and they, they, they got caught.
So, so I think, I think the easiest thing is the county commissioners come up with a process of what they want us to follow. If you want me to schedule a meeting with private residents and your city engineer and our private engineers, whatever.
We don't have a city engineer or even a county engineer.
Well, you, I mean, this is unincorporated, I mean, there's still planning and zoning.
Right.
So. Well, I want, I want his concerns heard, but at the same time...
That's all I'm asking, isn't it? In twomore, it doesn't, I mean, we're not gonna come up with a zoning commission to put something together on this. This is not, that's not gonna happen. But we do have a, we do have a citizen that has quite a bit of property there adjoining the development that's got some questions. I'd just like to see those resolved as, as we move forward with this.
Okay. So I'll set up a meeting with our engineer. Is there anyone from the commissioners that wanna go to this meeting or...
I, I don't need to be there, I don't think. I mean, I can be there, but there's, I've got, I've got no decision in that part.
I understand that, that's why I said it's a private matter. But if we're, if you guys want a meeting set up, we'll set up a meeting.
Right, we just, we would just like to not see the private matter turn into a civil matter, you know what I mean?
No, I understand.
Okay.
Well, Marvin, I, I mean, I think at the end of the day, we're gonna have to approve this plat. I mean, whether, you know, the neighbors like it or not, I mean, I got a drill house across the river from my house.
Well, I get that, I understand that. I'm not saying that we can disapprove the plat, that's not what I'm saying.
Right.
All I'm saying is we've got a citizen that's concerned about which way the water's flowing and he doesn't understand that yet.
So what if you approve the plat and within thirty days, I have a meeting with the engineer and Mr. Williams and then we come back with the report that the engineer of this meeting and then you guys can read that into your minutes to where the concern's been addressed.
Well, I, I don't think, now, this is just my first, I don't think the commissioners really involve...
Well, they are now.
Well, you know, if you wait a minute, I'll, I'll explain this to you. But you're gonna have to, I know for a fact that, that that gas line is gonna cause a lot of problems with the detention pond, so. But if, if your engineers have said they have discussed that with, with them, you know, there's nothing I can say, but, because I just don't want a bunch of water coming over on me. Because you're gonna have to deal with a railroad track running right beside us and everything else.
So, Bill, I think he's agreed to get with you and try and see if we can...
Can I get a sheet, just for his information, can I just make a copy of that?
Um, sure. Public record, right?
Appreciate it.
Yep.
I learned that the interior district, I mean, you wanna...
Bill, one, you know, I mean, we, we all understand that it's in the unincorporated area of the county and, and to be quite honest with you, people don't even have to register their plats with the county.
Right.
Unless you want street numbers.
Right. Well, and, and again, with, with all the issues and all the drought that's coming on Penn, as I always mentioned earlier, if, if, if developers don't start spending the money to put in paved private roads and gutters to generate some of this water, Penn is gonna be the next disaster.
Yeah, absolutely it is.
So, so we're trying to get ahead of it. We've, we've owned this, we've owned this park for about four years. You know, we have another eighteen hundred acres on post in Waterloo that we're gonna design right now, so. I mean, we, we have, under various names, I mean, we probably have eight thousand acres between Waterloo and Simmons. That's why we're trying to do the right for the developers and the engineers.
And we appreciate that, really.
So you want me, you want us, you want me to come back?
I think what we, I think what we've agreed to, I think what Mr. Williams has agreed to is that we can approve the plat now and you talked about getting a meeting.
And I'll come back, I'll come back within thirty days. I'll come back and I'll present to the commissioners and we'll read them to the public after then.
Okay, that sounds great. That's great, we, we approved.
The language is around here about...
Right, right. I was like...
I think there's legal restrictions inherent about all the eastern institutes to cover everything.
Yep.
I'll send out the road, yeah, I've got the road, yes.
Okay.
You want to add some...
Yeah, I got it.
And, you, Marty?
I'm Marty.
Hey, did you set me up?
Yep.
Uh, no, Marvin's checking in.
Okay. Okay, thanks for coming in.
Almost made it.
Sorry, I have a whole bunch of stuff at me.
Did you guys put sticky notes up? I have a girl that'll get mad at me.
You want some?
You gotta put sticky notes up before you guys sign.
Oh, yeah, we do.
I have some, once it makes its way down here.
Your girls will get mad at you.
Well, I have to sign it too, so...
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Smears don't copy well on the line.
There's two copies. Okay, moving on. Item six, open seal bid number twenty twenty-two dash nineteen for conversion of twenty seventeen Stewart seven truck for Sooner Fire Department, in consideration of possible action on award of said bid, explains why we've been a fireman here today.
Yes, sir.
I'm finishing this.
Soon as Troy gets this all stamped up, she'll crack out that sealed bid. Good luck.
I'll be fine. Thank you. I'll call, I'll call Marty and fight back, Troy. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Happy day.
Okay.
Take them, take them to their praise, here, I'll take them to their praise, your girls.
Okay. And, Ron, Jay, who has some...
Yeah, we like Donald's here.
We sent a big package to Proton.
I guess, which of us didn't want to show off? Which today, you do a good job out there, boy.
Yeah, I'm able to...
Yeah?
People don't understand.
It still looked like, which one of y'all were burning? Uh, Jeff Stewart's these.
Huh?
So we got that cap.
Over there, don't say anything.
Trying to build something kind of, on the weather plan. He could put a stage in that engine right there. I don't believe he'll destroy it.
Somebody needs to put that in.
So...
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta get it.
They're expensive, but...
Ninety-five thousand, forty dollars.
For a curb. It does, you know, it's everywhere, it has, fly, all that.
So Jeff, we can make the copies, please, to pick up the later on.
Thank you.
I'd like to check in so we can discuss.
And you can request the board to table if you...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And this one, for J and J is thirty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty. Wow. I would question, that's a sixty thousand dollar swing.
Well, one of them's got chrome bumpers and the other one doesn't.
So you'd like for us to table it?
Yes, it would, same, yes, sir. Gotta give us a chance to look at it.
Okay, so we're gonna table item six until our next meeting.
Troy, can I have Sarah make him a copy, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, girl.
Your chrome bumpers. Oh, yeah. I'm sure that's the difference.
That was just safety measure, for me to know that.
What?
When that pot was coming out.
Well, I appreciate that, 'cause we were talking about which way the water was gonna go anyway.
And here, I think it goes down here.
Yeah, I was, um, it was just a sub...
I'll get back, Monty. Cool. All right, we'll move on to item seven, one of your favorite topics. Consideration of possible action on reservation statute, I'll scheme, countywide burn ban. Now, last time we talked about this, I said I was gonna run the actual statutes. There's a nip and dare clauses and all that stuff. This is what we're supposed to follow for, for burn bans, right? So, uh, so we'll start with top two, section B one. Uh, section A talks about what the government's responsibilities are, right? And so section B starts with the county, and it talks about it's unlawful to do such and such. So all of, all of the things in item B one are unlawful during a, during a burn ban, right? Uh, one of the things that we talked about as a board was to try and figure out the things that are legal to do under a burn ban. For example, firing up propane grill and cooking steaks on patio, is that illegal under a burn ban? I don't think so. Uh, but there's all, there's a, a whole list of things that you can do under a burn ban, and we wanna be able to put that on our website and, and show people what, what that is. However, okay, so, uh, extreme fire danger is, is defined, there are one, two, three different, uh, criteria there. Severe, extreme, or exceptional drought conditions exist, uh, as per NOAA. No more than one half inch of precipitation is forecast for the next three days, and either of the following. Fire appearance is significantly greater than normal for the season, and/or initial attack on a significant number of wildland fires has been unsuccessful due to extreme fire behavior, or two, where the data is available, more than twenty percent of the wildfires in the county have been caused by escaped debris or controlled burning. So that third one, I think, is where we have, kinda have some issues, trying to figure out one way or the other. Uh, it appears to me that with the forecast for tomorrow's rain, that we may have more than a half inch coming. Uh, but, uh, the, this, this, uh, B one talks about what we have to do to meet the definition of extreme fire danger, so those three items. And so the, the rest of this talks about how long we can do it, and that's where it stops. Uh, it also talks about item four. Agricultural producers burning crop lands, range forests, pastures, uh, as a preferred method of managing their properties shall be exempt from any resolution passed by the Board of County Commissioners that declares a period of extreme fire danger, so long as the agricultural producers have complied with the following procedures. A, submit a written prescribed burn ban to the local fire department, and if within a protected area, the local office or local representative of the forestry division for Oklahoma, uh, Department of Agriculture, Food Forestry, nearest the land to be burned, which shall include the following information. The name, telephone number of the agricultural producer controlling, conducting the burn, the address and legal description of the area to be burned, the object, the purpose of the burn, uh, a list of fire departments and sheriff offices that are required to be notified pursuant to paragraph C of this paragraph, and list of adjoining landowners, except, uh... Anyway, Monty, there, there's a procedure there for landowners to do that, even if we have a burn ban in place, okay? So that's, that's one of those things, right? Uh, and then five, uh, the prescribed burn ban provided for in paragraph four of the subsection shall be deemed approved seventy-two hours after submission to the local fire department. Trying to find something. Other than that, than that, that's, that's about it, talks about fines and fees, and that a burn ban doesn't provide it selling fireworks, so I... I don't know.
I guess keeping that revenue stream open.
No, I, I still don't think we meet the criteria.
No, we, I...
Steven says we don't need one.
Yeah, with the rain we're gonna get, I don't, I don't, we don't meet the criteria to need one, so... Well, when we had our emergency meeting, uh, to, to talk about this the last time, we promised we'd put it back on here to, to look at and discuss. So, uh, I guess what I'm hearing from the board is, we don't believe we need one right now.
No action.
No action. Is that what the board wants? That's the answer?
Yes.
Okay, let me speak for one. All right. Yeah, I get it. Thanks, Steve. So anyway, uh, where do we come up with a list of, of items that can be done? Like, can you, can you burn logs in your chimney in your, in your fireplace at home? During a burn ban?
It's indoor.
It is indoor, but they go out, out the chimney, right?
Well, if it's done right, they don't...
Can you burn logs in your chimenea out on the porch? Out on the back, out on your back patio, or front patio for that matter?
I think it's gotta be on a concrete... I think so, Dave.
That's Marty, about me. Well, I mean, uh, those are questions we could ask, and we need to be...
I get them asked, too, a messenger, I get a lot of the questions from people going, hey, can I... Hello?
Chimnea and maple, this was the last, you could, I would place it the same, I mean, if you put a grill on a solid surface.
Yeah, I don't know where it comes in, I know you can.
Okay.
I'm just setting up to burn them bongs and...
Yeah, burn the bloods.
It is what it is.
Does it have to be a concrete surface or a flat surface?
I think the, the resolution that we used said solid surface, yeah.
Maybe more solid than that.
Right now.
That's, that's a perfect description, there. Okay, welding, cutting torch, grinding activities. So, what... So where, where did these come from initially, do we know?
That was the resolution that Steven provided me that, that is very similar to one that we've used standardly through the years.
Well, I mean, like, I mean, where it says wind speeds must be less than ten miles an hour, I take that to be a subjective number.
Yeah, I'm not sure who wrote that.
Yeah, that was just a general one that they had, that other counties have used. That's, that's kinda what we wanted, make sure we put those restrictions. When under burn ban, these are, these are, the restrictions is what you can do, and what you can't do.
I'll take a stab at rewriting that, because the thing that I think the resolution should also reflect is decider number four. You know, pursuant to agricultural...
Well, it mentions it briefly there, but it doesn't explain it.
Right, so I'll, I'll take a stab at rewriting that.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen, on, on that, Monty?
No, I, no.
No, uh?
None.
Okay, so, no action, right?
That's correct.
All right, item consideration of possible action on resolution, oh, hang on, on detention transportation claim from December twenty twenty-one in the amount of four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-nine cents. I'll move with you.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, please. Don't have many.
Move that along, yeah.
Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve purchase order from CBRI account, uh, to Heska Lemons in the amount of a hundred and five thousand for base repair and overlay of Cooksey Road between Pine and Walnut for District Three. I'll make a motion and approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve.
More here, Monty.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, the, uh, purchase request, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, item ten, consideration of possible action on resolution to declare surplus of twenty twelve, uh, six seventy-two G John Dare Grader, uh, serial number ending in four three eight three eight for District One. This is the grader we paid off earlier in the trust meeting, and we'd like to declare this excess and put it in the, the old auction. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to, to approve, any further discussion?
Pass.
Oh, okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I don't think we have, we have issues with that sheriff's office, I think.
Well, I think the fire department does. The fire departments, right? 'Cause they're always calling us to bring out equipment to help cut fire breaks and stuff like that. There's nothing better for cutting a fire break than a red car.
I'll take the word for it, I know a couple.
But I, I haven't either, I've seen it done on TV once.
Do you have a PO number for this?
Once I have one.
Interesting, okay. The original cost of that. That's what we bought it for, and now it's down to under forty thousand dollars, what we got here. All right, item eleven. Consideration of possible action on county treasures, transcript, proceedings, and signing county resale deed to Sydney Baron for the following property, Capitol Hill Lot seventeen, Lot ninety, and Capitol Hill Lots twelve, Lot seventy-three, for a hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents each.
This is resale property, um, the transcript of the sale for each, which is signed by the board, and then the deed, and then a follow-up, which is going to be signed by the chairman.
I'll make a motion and approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve, transfer, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Came to the trust, from the treasure market.
Plural, huh? You just put that with the other ones down there. Thank you, sir. All right.
Chairman, we have nothing for item twelve, but there are pain.
All right, we, fourteen, discussion of action on consent agenda.
Yours, hello?
How was your trip, Sheriff?
It's okay. It's a bad part of the world, would have to visit.
Anything good, Ken Freeman?
I hope so.
A nice one. Absolutely.
For money.
If, if you want a friendly voice, what are you doing? You need to take your dog with you.
And the pigeons are pretty cruel.
How was the weather?
It's nice. My turn to hold a seat here.
Did I see right that next year the national conference is in the city?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
In Oakville City?
Yes, sir.
Cool.
They're gonna do it in that new convention center that I'm in. Have you seen that thing?
No, I've seen it from the road.
Huh?
Seen it from the road. I thirty-five road, I forty.
And, see, I stayed in that Omni Hotel and that convention center's right there behind it. It's massive.
Well, the thing with the national, it's really limited on where they can do it because of the size of it. You know, because there'll be four thousand, five thousand people there. I mean, it's...
That's why I'm hoping maybe someday we can bring the V F W National Convention to Oakville City.
Mike, maybe if Mr. Collier's available next week, if he could come out and help with those trees.
Okay.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to help the guy out, but I'm kind of short. Well, I understand. Not a problem. I appreciate your help, but...
I just love you.
No, thank you.
Transfers, one of these is for your transfers selling you something needs to, and then... This is what it's going to be. Now, the board signs a little farther down.
Well, yeah. I didn't see that.
And then reports.
Reports.
Officer, how much money did we take in?
Let's see, let's see how much cash you got included.
Just for a month.
Now, for this Friday, you said you'll be getting me stuff also for this Friday?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll just email the form, y'all can print out ballots. I tell you, I'm very proud. Now, you need to contact the election board.
Yes.
And get either a printout, which would be way large. I think, Monty, you've done it with a flash drive on a laptop.
I have.
To, so you can check your voter rolls. Because just like any other election, they need to show their identity on the voter roll. And then also with the election board, they will loan you one of their ballot boxes. These are our reports for preservation for the court clerk, so it only requires the chairman to sign. And there, and...
Only first cash book. Isn't sneaky to me. Is that a squirrel site?
No, I can explain.
Squirrel away. Squirrel stuff.
Ninety percent what you're seeing right there goes to Joe Alton.
Oh, we like that.
But those other little pieces, I did this paper, which allowed me to do this big index I just ordered. And that will conclude.
I'll move with you through the intended agenda items.
I will second those.
That's fine. She said it's a little required, it's one too. So a motion and a second on consent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item fifteen, discussion of possible action on approving claims for payments for February twenty twenty-two. Holy snap and alleviators. Well, I sure hope your fire department's messed up a bunch there. I know I'm gonna have one for two. I'm not saying nothing.
Happens to the best of us.
Yep. Lucky there.
One of those instances where the charge is moving recorded.
I know those asshole guys do that all the time.
Yeah.
You already got it on the ground, what are you gonna do? Grind it up in the back?
Right.
Always things come to the heart.
Yeah. Haven't really done that since my... Do you like that, Cody?
I have a hard time signing these.
I'm sorry, that was a slow pitch, I couldn't let it go.
Visual inspection. This is one I always questioned.
What's that?
What is the visual inspection?
It's also known as REBOW, so that's the account that pays for the assessor's people that have to go out property to property and inspect. Hence, visual inspections.
Okay.
Those are also safety sensitive positions, in case you were wondering.
Yes, they are.
I think we discussed that before, didn't we?
We're gonna get to do it again, not too long in the future here.
Okay. That's it for payments.
Make the motion go through claims.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item sixteen, discussion of possible action on approving purchase card payments for February twenty twenty-two. We have five hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents on P cards. I'll move with you through.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, there is further discussion. What have we got to do to expand who and what the P card process in counties? Who at the Oklahoma State Department of Auditors do I need to go kick over the trash can to get them to understand that we're losing money? It's costing the counties money not to be able to use credit cards or purchase cards down at our level? Not, and, and what I'm trying to do, I'm not trying to get into your business too much, but there's a whole lot that goes on that, you know, we take up a lot of your time chasing stuff down. I know you've got a purchasing department, but there's no reason why, you know, a lot of the other departments can't coordinate those purchases with your department and use our own cards to do that.
Okay, so, and I'll be honest, at the time that I came to the board and suggested that we obtain the purchase cards we have, it was under the idea that there would only be the three in the county and we wouldn't have individuals with individual cards. And the reason for that is the administration of it falls completely on the county clerk as the administrator by statute. And the workload chasing down those individual cards is more than, than we can handle.
Yeah. So I'm not sure we're, I think we, that's the rule, me.
Okay. So I guess I'm not understanding what you're asking.
I want Cassidy to have a card.
Can we discuss that?
Uh, yeah, that's what we're here for.
Again, the load of the individual cards is, is intense on my office to have to manage an individual card. And that was, that was the agreement that was made with this board when we went to P cards is there would just be the three.
So there's three cards?
Yes, in the county.
Who has them?
I do, Tracy does, and Purchasing does. They never leave, they're locked up in the office.
The only issue is like, from time to time, we try to buy something in the city and they will not accept a P O anymore. And I think that's where this is coming from. How can we do business with them if they won't take a P O? And that's my question.
Right, and, and the problem is by statute, we can't pass out the card. We can't, we can't transmit the numbers by statute.
Well, especially right now when, when resources are limited and you, you've only got few places that have things that you need. I mean, just like having to go to Tractor Supply, we gotta go...
We have a separate card with Tractor Supply. And no, Tractor Supply cards couldn't be issued to individuals regardless. That, 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 that's not an option.
Or, but if we had a P card where you use it at Tractor Supply...
Yeah, but you have a card that can be picked up.
No, 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 you're missing my, the entire point. And maybe, I'm not saying you're doing this on purpose, but you really don't want to do this and I understand that. It's, it's more of a burden on you. But if each one of our, if each one of our admins had a card that we could use in coordination with your office to do these things, like, you know, to buy things from places that don't have or won't take purchase orders anymore?
We can look into it, I can tell you, just without deep dive. They have to attend purchasing card training annually.
Check.
I can't, I'm just going over.
Okay.
There's a whole approval process through Bank of America who, who has to. I mean, it's not something I can do in a day.
Right.
At all. As far as Tractor Supply, there is a Tractor Supply card. All it's gotta do is get picked up and walk to Tractor Supply.
Well, I was just using Tractor Supply as a...
Uh, no, I don't want to do this, Marvin. I, I was clear about that when we first got the P card. It, it is a can of worms. The unintended consequences of having to worry about what cards are in what wallet and being used is, is, is tough.
Yes, I agree. You know, I was told that I needed to start this conversation with recommending that we do direct deposit for paychecks. And then when we got through that, we could talk about the P cards and...
I mean, I'm not trying to be stubborn. The administrative of this doesn't fall on you all.
I agree, I agree. We, we want to help as much as we can. I, I promise you that if someone, if we have someone that even slightly tries to abuse this process, they will have the full wrath of Monty coming down on them. Right, Monty?
That's right.
Okay.
Me, I will check into it, but understand that it's, it's not something that comes easy for what we have to do to safeguard that stuff.
I understand, and we all need to safeguard the taxpayers' money. We're all into that. That's what we're all here for, yes, ma'am. We want to help, but we also want to get our, our jobs done as well and save the taxpayers' money better also. Any further discussion on the P card?
I'm good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, item seventeen, comments, announcement.
Addendum.
Ah, hang on. We do have an addendum, thank you. So, addendum was consideration possible action on agreement with C E C Corporation for bridge analysis for pipe replacement report in the amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars. Aaron sent this to us and wanted us to put it on the, put it on the agenda for today. And I've read this, so... This is just the agreement between the C E C and the county for doing that work.
This includes the desktop identity study.
For it.
Yes, yes, that's exactly what that is. I'll move with you through.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, back to item seventeen. Comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners or other county officers and department heads. Sheriff, you got anything?
No, sir.
For the crew? Thank you, sir, for catching all those speeders out there.
They're on the list.
All right. We got way too many roads and way too many speeders and not near enough deputies to catch them all. I get that, we all...
It's time to learn.
For everyone. It is.
And troopers.
Or, in the military, we called it a target-rich environment, but it's a different...
At the target, yeah.
All right. Ma'am?
No.
All right, thank you. Monty?
I'm good, thank you. I appreciate y'all supporting the C B R I P O.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Cody?
I have nothing.
All right. Item eighteen, consideration possible action on adjournment. I'll move with you to adjourn.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, adjournment.